I'm making this announcement in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, being Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, laws of the New Jersey. The Planning Board Secretary has prepared a schedule of the meetings of the Planning Board of the Borough of Kenilworth for the year 2023, and has posted a true copy of the scheduled bulletin board located at the front entrance of Borough Hall, and has mailed true copies of this schedule to the local source and the Starlighter, and is maintaining a copy of this schedule in Borough Hall. According to the legal notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, has been satisfied with regards to this meeting. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Veserna?
Here.
Mr. David?
Here.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mr. Clemente?
Here.
Mr. Pantina?
Here.
Mr. Mazio?
Here.
Mr. Ladouti?
Here.
Mr. Havelario?
Here.
Okay, that's it. Okay, any communications?
No, chairman.
Okay, thank you. Let's move right into resolutions. Mr. Revo, Application Number 5-22 and 392, 251 Monroe Avenue.
Yes, we approved this at our May 11 meeting. This was at very large site on Monroe Ave., 251 Monroe Ave., for warehousing and storage. The attorney for the applicant corresponded with me today and had three requested modifications to the resolution. Let me just tell you what they are. And my pages are different from when you printed out my resolutions. Sometimes the numbers are off. But anyway, on paragraph seven in the resolution, I think it's on page three, paragraph seven, I have a comment there that the attorney for Boca USA commented that the application's under review by the DEP regarding appropriate permitting. Mr. Calley said, "That's really not what we meant." He said, "In response to the planning board chair's comments about the millings, I assured him that we would not bring in contaminated materials or conduct any illegal dumping on the site, and we would agree that we would be able to document where our millings came from." Is that your understanding of it?
Yeah, I remember that down.
You didn't have me know it was your comments in the...
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And on the conditions in the back, I think it's on, what page is it? Check either page five or six. Check page five, conditions seven and eight. On condition seven, which was hours of operation, the comment was that these are our general business hours as we discussed during the hearing. Trucks are loaded the day before, and sometimes they leave the site prior to 7:30. We also discussed the need to protect residents from idling trucks early in the morning. Please confirm. And he just wants to make sure that these hours are the business hours and not pre and post.
So the business hours are 7:30 to 3:30 Monday through Friday, and 7:30 a.m. to 11:30 on Saturday?
Yes.
But that's business hours, but the trucks start the engines at 6:30 or 7 o'clock in the morning.
So what I would need to do there if the board approves is say, "Oh, those are your business hours, not operational hours."
But there goes the problem.
Right.
Right.
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, because the concern was that, what if they start idling trucks at 4:00 a.m.?
Exactly.
So how are we preventing that? You know, I mean, we can't approve a resolution without knowing exactly when they might start idling your trucks.
Okay, so the need to protect residents from idling trucks early in the morning, you say, in the 6:00 a.m. hour. Where are you reading that? In his? Just his, I just got this today. I haven't been able to circulate it. He basically says, "We may be doing stuff a little ahead of time or a little after, but these are when the doors are open to our business."
I get the business hours, but...
He can say something...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, probably beyond this, if we want to, we either leave it alone, or we can say, "No idling prior to, whatever, 7:00 a.m.," and no, you can, you know, leave the site. He said they leave prior to 7:30 a lot of times.
No, look, I know for a fact that when you have these big trucks, and they have to get started because they have to get that coil heated up in order for them to go, but they also sit in that truck for hours sometimes because waiting for their loads, and that thing is idling like crazy.
Okay.
So we have to be careful what we say yes to. Were you going to say something, Kevin?
Chairman, there's also a typo on that, on the last bottom sentence, 7:30 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. on Saturday?
Yeah, that should be a.m. Yeah, yeah. Clearly.
I'm sorry, thank you.
As far as the idling time, in the discussion, it was kind of left ambiguous.
Yeah.
Like, he basically said, "Yeah, we'll make sure we'll be good neighbors and we're not doing it at 4:00 a.m.," but then we never kind of closed the loop on that.
I thought he did say something around between 6:00 and 7:00.
That's what I recall, that he made statements.
Even those trucks ready between 6:00 and 7:00 in the morning.
We could restrict them. I mean, we could put something reasonable in here and just say... I think 6:00 is reasonable. Oh, does the board think it's reasonable? I mean, it's a little early, but...
I think 6:00 is reasonable.
6:00 a.m. hour, okay. So no trucks can idle before 6:00 a.m. and no more than one hour, because you don't need those trucks to idle for hours just waiting. They could shut them down, because that coil now heats up. I forget what they call that coil. That coil will heat up in 15 minutes.
There's an actual DEP regulation that limits idling to three minutes statewide.
Three minutes?
Wow.
After the truck is heated, after the truck is heated up?
Yes.
Okay.
That should be...
So I like that. As for the DEP regulation, after the truck is heated up, you should not idle more than three minutes as per the...
Or as per state law.
Yeah, but we're still saying that they can't start the trucks before 6:00 a.m.
Right.
I can put that, put that...
Yeah, for start. Start the truck.
Start.
Start. See, what they have, they have this coil in there, and sometimes the engine actually don't get started, but that coil heats up, and then you're able to start the engine once that goes. But once it starts, it's got to warm up a little bit, and then you can shut it down again, and now it's in operation.
Okay. And last, the next condition, number eight, I stated as agreed to by the applicant, the applicant shall be reviewed by the DEP regarding the need for appropriate permitting. Their comment was, and that's with regard to the wetlands area in the southern portion of the property, I think down where the residents work. So that's what he's saying, that we'll do whatever we need to do, including that catch basins and all the rest, you know, cleaning them out.
Well, what about those catch basins? I thought we asked them to tie in, to have them camered and tied in.
We did.
He did it?
No, we did. We asked them.
Oh, we did, is what you're saying. Yeah, I don't see that unless I miss it.
I put, "Three catch basins, the southern portion of the property shall be inspected by the applicant and flushed and/or repaired if needed."
Okay.
And then he said the DEP issues regarding wetlands determinations in the southern here, southern corner of the property.
That would be under the inspection of the Borough here.
Per Borough Engineer?
Yes. Okay. Don't you guys remember that we asked them to camera those to make sure that there was no openings, penetration, so you need to put that in there and move.
Well, I put repairs, is that the same thing?
No, because a repair could be anything, but if they're camered, you're going to know if they're compromised.
Camera, how to get it spelled out.
Oh, the camera.
You spelled camera?
Got it.
C-A.
Cat.
Give me another.
It's not a put-up with that.
Okay, got it.
I called, "So I've learned you, they put me on hold."
I will put that in. That's it. So we have the idling...
Those are important things here.
All right.
Yes, agree to that.
Camera.
Agree?
Well, he doesn't have to agree. We could just pass it, and if he doesn't comply, then he doesn't get what he wants.
Greg always brings it down to the...
Yeah, right to the point.
Your resolution.
Okay, we're good. We're good.
Good with that?
Okay.
Yep.
And I can modify those and get into our...
Based on the conditions that we just talked about, or nothing, those are not conditions. Those are, two of them were, two of them were conditions.
Right.
First one was about the milling and providing as with documents, no illegal dumping and providing as with documents as to where the millings came from. So let's say, based on the adjustments made to the resolution set forth, can we have a motion to approve?
As modified.
As modified.
I'll make a motion that we approve 251 Monroe, owner L.C.C.
Motion made by Mr. Ladouti?
As adjusted.
Second. Second by Mr. Mazio, roll call.
Mr. Veserna?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
I think I have to say, because I wasn't here.
I don't think he was here for that.
Mr. Mazio?
Yes.
Mr. Ladouti?
Yes.
That's it? Okay. So let's move on to Application 23-002, Angelo's Steakhouse, 101 now North 10th Street. What do you have for that? We also approved that on May 11. It's the board wrote, "Recall this, the restaurant is expanding. We've limited them to 131 guests total. They wanted a little bit more, but it was important for the valet parking. Staff, 12. There were some setbacks, which we granted, and I laid out what's going to be involved in the first floor addition and the second floor addition in terms of bathrooms, wheelchair lift, and things like that. We approved it with our normal conditions, mainly involving parking, maximum of seats when it hits, I think, 75 people, or if there's a quote "special event," they have the valet." So I tried to capture all that in here. So you also want a written lease that shall be continuously maintained, because I don't want to, I think they said a four-year lease.
They did.
What happens after four years?
We were asking that question.
Yeah, so I put in that they're going to, if they have a problem, they come back and try to fill in around with the condition.
Now, I know you mentioned the 131, but we also said that there was a maximum of 50 downstairs or 60?
There are, there are...
How come I don't have...
First floor has 75 seats, and the second floor...
Because they adjusted by 10?
Yes. The second floor was going to have 60, but they reduced it to 50, and then six seats at the bar. They broke it down to, in the first floor, they broke it down to restaurant, bar, and seating on the stage area, that was 75 total. And they wanted 60, and 60 seats, and six at the bar for the basement, but we knocked it down to 50 seats.
Right.
So, is that in it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Total is 131.
So there's no adjustment to this resolution. Everybody go with this?
I just have one question. So we don't need that lease before we pass this resolution?
I would think we would want, not we, but the permitting individuals in the borough would want to see a lease of some kind, because that's important. I don't think, I'm speaking for myself, would you approve this with no...
No, no, I'm just saying, do we need that document before I say, "Okay, well, I'll make a motion to approve this?"
No, we don't, we don't, that's a condition. I mean, they need to show the appropriate people here, and maybe even Kevin, you know, before they sign off on building permit or whatever, we need to see a document. I thought they said they had it, but...
No, they said they were going to get it.
Well, we need to see that.
That's important.
Yeah.
It's part of those wishing compliance.
So that should be...
You need to amend this to reduce the lease prior to the issuance of the permit.
Right.
But that holds true with all conditions.
Yeah.
It doesn't spell it out.
It doesn't spell it out here.
All right, we'll take care of that. We want to see the lease.
Or the lease needs to be, someone should, needs to lay eyes on the lease before we go much further.
We just have a copy of it on file.
Okay. 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 I'll add it.
So we're adding to this resolution that we want a copy of the lease on file for the valet parking after the four years, not after four years, we want it now, stating that after the four years, there's a lease in place, and it's transferable to another person in case, in the event that Angelo sells to someone else.
Right?
Yes, Mr....
Can I say anything?
No. No, no, you can't. I forgot. We're not workshop. So that's where this was going that night, and everybody was quite adamant about it. So we go with that?
Got it.
Is there a motion to approve this application based on the adjustments made to the resolution about the four-year lease?
I'll make the, we approve Application 23-002, Angelo's Steakhouse.
Approved by Mr. Ladouti, seconded by Mr. Clemente, roll call.
Mr. Veserna?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Mazio?
Yes.
Mr. Ladouti?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's that. Good. Okay, now we have Application 3-21 and 387 PFP Shop LLC.
Good evening, everyone. Stephen Hale representing the applicant PFP Shop LLC. Great to see you all, and always a pleasure to be here for this board. Yeah, this is an application to take a vacant piece of property and put up a small warehouse slash storage building. Property's actually owned by Alex Wannan, who's here this evening. He's a long line business owner, the Pipe Bitters Plumbing over on South Michigan Avenue. He acquired this property. Again, right now, it's a vacant piece of property, and we're looking to put this nice building that was designed by Mr. Clemente here to have approved by the board. Again, right now, there's no site improvements. We're going to be introducing not only the new building, but in response to comments, and thank you, Christian and Kevin, for your comments, which we received, and we always get them well in advance from Wanda. But we're prepared to address those. We can certainly address the open space, provide landscaping, address any grain issues. There's no variances associated with the application other than the existing conditions, which the lot is slightly undersized and with respect to the lot dimensions itself. But again, it's, you'll see a great building that was designed here and built by Mr. Clemente. What I'd like to do first is to call upon Ed Deck to take us through the existing conditions, the site plan, and then what's proposed by way of improvements.
All right, so Steve, other than Ed Deck and Bob, any other witnesses?
No, I mean, Alex is here in case there's any questions. And it's right now, I'll just also indicate that right now, there's no tenants. It's designed for two tenants, again, small space buildings, less than 3,000 square feet. But due to the size of the building and between Ed and Robert, describe generally the type of tenant that would go here, but some of the questions as far as number of deliveries, hours of operation alike, will depend upon ultimately the tenant, but again, the size kind of dictates what would go there.
Okay. Let me swear in the...
I'll swear on the...
Kevin, Chris, gentlemen, with regard to this application, do you swear any comments or testimony you make should be the truth?
I do.
And for the record, that is our board engineer and our board planner.
So I'd like to call upon Mr. Edward Deck.
Mr. Deck? Have you ever appeared before?
Yes, I have.
Okay, if you could raise your right hand. If you could, raise your right hand, please. With regard to this application...
Your right hand.
You swear that in the testimony you're about to give show of the truth?
I do.
Just state your name and swear your name for the record.
And we're, we're supposed to ask Mr. Deck to DC.
Are you calling out for both an engineer and a surveyor?
Engineer, licensed, yes, sir.
Okay, and your licenses are still good?
Yes, they are.
All right, it's up to the board. Mr. Deck, are you going to be using this?
I, yeah, I think so.
Okay, I just want to get out of your way.
I think he does have one copy of it.
Are these, are these what we have?
Yes.
Then we'll have to mark them. If there's anything different than what we have, we'll mark them.
What I'd like to just point to clarify is that these units are initially submitted almost two years ago. Whenever some changes done, as you see by the revision dates, even about a year ago. So these are the most current plans, but, you know, there's some discrepancies between maybe some old material. That's the reason why. It was the first original plan, I won't get too far, just had a larger building, we reduced it so we would not need a marketing. That's where we're at now, and with those plans in front of you.
And these are the ones that are on file. All right, so take us, Mr. Deck, take us first through overview, existing conditions, and then if you're returning to the exhibit, just identify the page.
Certainly. Let's shoot one, three, shoot area, sign the plan, file it, fill it in, for 7.2, 7.4, connect it with the 25 and 26, the lot. Here it is, shoot, as you can see, we have two, but anyways, you have aerial view of the site itself, and then zoning that, a list of adjoining property owners, names, or the zoning of that, right there, a few notes which tend to be part of the approval of the resolution, also the utility companies that were involved, and our full zoning chart. As you can see, we have a lot that's 80 by 100, which is 8,000 square feet. That is a variance that is required. I initially had said that one of the initial applications, no variance required. I was using an incorrect zoning reference for the site. So the proposed area is 8,000 square feet, now however, required is 12,000 square feet, and that's what has, is not shown or is incorrect on my plan and the plans we've tried to do.
Mr. Deck, I think it's 20,000.
Yeah, I'm sorry. 20,000 square feet. The lot frontage, again, that's incorrect, that's from the older version, should be 100. We have an existing 80. And again, both the 8,000 existing condition and 8,000 proposed condition is the existing number for it. Flat depth's 100 feet, which is within that criteria, and we need all of the other full requirements as far as building setbacks, building side yards, green yards, building coverage, and total coverage. There's one item here that's zoned by the planner as far as the open space. Open space is not shown. That is, that should be 8% lot coverage, as opposed to 5%. We have 73.95, or 74%, which reciprocal of that is 26%, and a green open space is a minimum of 20%, so we exceed the minimum by 6%. So as far as the bulk requirements go, other than lot width and frontage and area, we need all of those conditions.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
I'm confused as to why we're looking at something that's not accurate. I mean, you said several times that that should be this, but it's that. I mean, why aren't we looking at what we should be?
Can we get that answer, Mr....
Well, I, I was there. This was what was submitted when we received the review letters and looked at that, and it's pointed out that, again, these are existing, two are existing conditions, there are 20,000 required, and we have 8,000. So we're just clarifying it by way of testimony, that, again, it doesn't impact the layout of the site.
No, I heard what you said originally, but I'm saying, normally we get plans that represent, you know, we have a column here that's required, just saying, you know, this is required, that's required, that should be, I mean, why is this in my possession and not accurate to what you're actually looking to build? I mean, that's not the way the board usually does business.
Again...
We should have received new plans.
But again, we received the review letters, and we can hopefully address it tonight through testimony, because we didn't get them. We wanted, we then be submitting all the plans shortly before the hearing, and we figured we'd cover it tonight during our presentation.
What is, Mr. Hale, what is the impact of the difference between the two plans? The ones that we see here that we all have and what was actually submitted electronically?
That's what was submitted. It's just that, again, the lot area isn't shown. That hasn't changed. 8,000 is what's there, 8,000 is what's shown on the plan, 8,000 is what's on our, the only thing is what was required and is always 20,000, it's an undersized lot. As far as the lot width, it is what it is. It's shown there as required, 50, in fact, is 100. And then as far as open space, we're specifying that even though it's not shown on the column, we do have the required open space.
I mean, again, from my perspective, at the end of the day, this is what will end up with the file. Am I correct?
No, we revised the plans that were submitted.
Okay, well, then that needs to be a condition, obviously.
Oh, there's no doubt that if this was kind of to grant the application, that one of the conditions of resolution applies, and it's noted in both harbor and the Shamrock Review, that those plans would need the zoning chart. Again, it doesn't change, but it's there.
I understand.
But I appreciate it.
So Mr. David does make a good point. And as long as we could, if there's no other changes or anything else except these items that you're talking about, then, Mr. David, 100% correct, it's probably the condition that the proper plans be submitted. Did you want to say something? Go ahead, mid-sentence, guy. You got it.
No, all I'm saying is that these are some of the things that we always look for, and even by tonight, would we, if we said, "No, we're not going to hear it, go back and do this," it's three or four captions that maybe can be adjusted through a condition. So if the board is okay with that, then we're going to continue.
And that's why we appreciate your professionals that look at and point these items out to us, that we're prepared to address them.
Mr. Pantina?
While you're talking about inconsistencies on the cover page, in the third column, the Borough officials need to be addressed. Then the carolages is mayor, the other three people aren't.
Okay. What was your statement, Nick? I couldn't hear you.
Mayor's right, the chief, clerk, and superintendent, I don't know who the superintendent is these days.
His chief is Fred Seuss, Borough Clerk is not Lawrence, and he's saying those things are all inaccurate.
Does the board have a problem with that?
It should be what is...
I agree. It should be that, I don't, so let me speak for the board, but I, it should be done properly. I don't want to borderline technical, you know, technicalities, but if it doesn't impact the, what they're looking for, if we could continue...
Yeah, again, I'm just pointing out, for me, I feel this deviates from normal protocol, and so I wanted to raise that. It does. You're 100% right. It's up to the board to decide if we want to continue to hear the application tonight or we have the option.
I can ask you this, as far as, you know, it's on the bulk chart, they were submitted, and the first thing they did was point out and acknowledge our planners and engineers' review that said, "Hater's mistake on the plan." In that case, when this was done, this review letter was done, what's the date?
February 15, 2021. The plans were submitted?
No, I'm talking about...
Why was June 2?
So from June 2 to now, was it realistic to expect a whole new submission, or we're taking, we're taking the planners' comments and then listening to testimony?
Yeah, I mean, again, I'm not suggesting that we stop the hearing. My point is, I wasn't aware that we would get revised plans, because I'm thinking this will go in a file someday, and then no one's going to remember that there was testimony that changed things that were on the plans. They're going to look at this and say, "Well, wait a minute, I see this, and this, and this," and that's what was approved, and again, no one's going to know that there's testimony. If new plans are submitted and they go into the official file, that satisfies my concern.
So we're going to base all the testimony tonight on the new plans that will be filed?
That are coming.
That are coming. Based on what the attorney is saying, and our planner and our engineer has already brought in, is that correct? Yes, yes. All right, if the board is okay with this, then I can...
Move forward.
If anybody has any disagreement, please let us know. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, we appreciate that. All right, Mr. Deck, if you could now tell us through the existing conditions and then what's proposed by way of...
Sure. Question two, three, four, one. That's good, right there.
Hey, Mr. Deck, would you mind speaking up? For some reason, I cannot hear you real well.
Okay. It's air conditioned or something, something.
Yeah, there's something blowing out.
This is sheet 23, and it depicts the existing conditions along with adjoining lots and building, 200 feet on those adjoining lots. As you can see, presently, the site is vacant. It has some materials such as broken stone, broken asphalt, but no structures. It is comprised of two lots... It is comprised of two lots, twenty, uh, four, twenty five. We are asking for consolidation of those two lots. Um, fencing around the entire site and, uh, when the applicant is testifying, I believe he will testify to the fact that those fences will be replaced with new fences. Frontage, uh, along, uh, the site itself, it has a, uh, broken type of curb. Uh, we have an inlet, uh, that's directly in front of our site, which we're utilizing to control our runoff generated from the new improvements. And, uh, pretty much that is really what's there. Uh, presently, there are some vehicles parked there, which is pointed out in the plan which we do. Uh, those are temporary, they do not belong to the applicant, and they are not part of the set. Uh, so, I guess at this point, um, we'll go to sheet three. Sheet three shows the, uh, in the upper, the darkened color, the proposed, uh, site itself, uh, which the, uh, proposed two-story amazementary building. Uh, as you can see, the, uh, building is, uh, the size of the building. Uh, sixty-four by forty-six feet, I believe that equates to twenty-two, forty square feet. Uh, it's going to be a two-tenant type of structure. Uh, we're proposing, um, as you know, a, uh, a, a parking lot, paved parking area curb that'll service the, the structure and the tenants that will be occupying that structure. Uh, we're proposing eight parking stalls, which meets the, um, required minimum of parking. We have one handicap stall and, uh, we have a very wide aisle width, uh, between the parking stalls. So, as far as, um, access, ingress, egress to the site and also to the parking stalls, uh, it's easily accommodated by that extra width. We're proposing a, um, spine service sidewalk on the west side or left side of the, of the building along with a fenced-in, um, trash area, not a dumpster, but a trash area. We have landings on the back of the building and also on the east side of the building for doorway, uh, egress and egress. Um, if we can go, we can move to the right. Uh, before we move into that area, we are, uh, proposing a detention system that, um, is an underground pipe system and it's, uh, located in the, uh, eastern side of the parking area. Uh, it has a outlet structure that will intubate with stormwater flow to two-ten and a hundred year intubation at fifty cent by eighty percent. And then it goes to the existing, uh, inlet, uh, of, uh, fair penalty. We are proposing lighting in the parking lot. That'd be accomplished by having two light standards, one on each side of the parking area. Uh, there has not really been a defined, uh, time for lighting that we'll operate on, but, um, I would think from the time, uh, from dusk till when the, uh, place is unoccupied by the tenants and then, um, which would be no later, I guess, at nine o'clock. I'm not sure when time would be allowed for that occupation to, you know, here and out there. But it wouldn't be an all-night, uh, lighting, uh, standard.
And by the way, we did receive the, the board professionals' comments on that. No problem with lighting, it should, particularly if they're, they're not showing.
Right. In the rear, we just have the, uh, lighting above the doorway. And that's, that's shielded. That is not a, a light other than what should be elevated in the rear. We have, uh, other details for parking signs, handicap signs, the depressed curb, um, and again, on the sheet, the, uh, zoning charts are repeated from the same, um, information on sheet one, which will be corrected, uh, when we do the resolution of approval. And, um, I would say, uh, pretty much that's it. And then we go into the, uh, professional review letter.
Yeah, perhaps you can show that exhibit, one of them, as I mentioned in my opening, one of the comments, I think from both Arbor and Shamrock, that we have the opportunity to provide landscaping and, and darkening, and I think.
I have a, a plan.
Oh, okay.
There and I could show, you know, the.
We'll have to mark that.
Have you done here for now?
Uh, for now, yes.
Why haven't we marked that A1 and I see it's colorized it?
Okay.
And what can we call this? Landscaping?
Uh, well, it's, uh, the, uh, improvement plan with the, um, green area, open space area highlighted in green.
I do.
Did you bring copies of the word? Uh, no, this is the other copy.
And again, what, uh, when we receive, again, your professionals' comments, we thought we'd show this exhibit, uh, and that area, and I'll let Mr. Deck explain more detail, is where we can introduce, oh, green space to satisfy the open space requirement and, and landscaping and, and grassy, grass areas to, uh, enhance the appearance of the site.
Right. With this plan, shows the green area, shows all of the pervious area within the site and also the pervous area, which we are proposing to utilize within the right-of-way and the curb to make that a grass area. But what that green shows is a pervious coverage and that is twenty-six percent of the lot. Right now, we just have fencing along the perimeter on the sides in the rear. Uh, we will, if it's a, uh, concern of the board, to provide, uh, extra landscaping such as arbor ivies in the back and along the perimeter of the rear line. You could also, I'm not sure if there's any reason to do it on either side of the, uh, of the properties, since here are both industrial uses on either side of our property. We would also, if the support, uh, concern is to put, uh, street tree on either side of the driveway entrance.
That was a comment of the, the street tree requirement again.
It says three. I think it said three trees were required. Kevin, is that?
That is correct.
Whatever the requirement is.
That, that is really, uh, well, that's a part of this exhibit A1.
And if you want to then move on to addressing the, the review comments.
Sure, I'll start with, uh, the engineers' review comments.
And if, if you want to be touched on, right, what are the, now, we have a chance to go through.
Uh, the first comment describes the, uh, total areas, both the breakdown, the separation between the two tenant areas and the total building area, uh, for a total of twenty-two, twenty-four square feet for the building. Um, the, uh, those breakdowns are also used in generating the, uh, demand or requirement for the parking, uh, using those two calculations. Uh, one thousand square feet per, um, warehouse use is equates to one stall and then two-hundred-fifty square feet per office, uh, equates to a stall. And if we were to look at the chart, um, if we go back to the, the zone chart, the bottom of the zone chart, you can see the calculations for the required parking. So, we require eight and we are providing eight stalls. Uh, the next comment, traffic, how traffic would function at the center, uh, picture the larger one. We have an opening of thirty-two feet from the roadway into the site. It's a thirty-two foot by pile. There are garage doors, which, uh, will be shown on the architectural plan, that span the front of the building between the parking areas, the separation between the doors. Again, nobody would, uh, to be able to see that more clearly on the architectural plan. Coming into the site for the, uh, tenants of the site would be a typical type of parking lot maneuver or movement. You come in, park head in, um, you leave, you back out, and you, you go out head first. There's no backing out with the, through those, uh, vehicles using those, uh, parking stalls. If we have any type of truck loading, like say a step van or a single body truck coming into the site, uh, it would make sense for them to back in and then pull out, but I'm not sure if there's any way that that can be regulated on the, than, uh, someone knowing that there's no way to pull in head first and then empty out your truck once you get in there. So, it would have to be backed in in order to empty your truck or to fill your truck from the, uh, structure itself. Um, so that, that is how the parking is handled.
Uh, just a second. Um, that the applicant stated that there, that he doesn't have tenants yet, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, we, we wouldn't know what type of vehicles that would, he may need or?
Correct. But if you say this in all of his eyes, that you're not going to have traffic for dollars of things coming in on something like this.
And I, I would expect that they would all, a larger truck, something that has to be loaded or unloaded, would be backing into the site because that's the other thing to really learn. The, uh, we'll go down to number six. Um, the reflection of the curb, the applicant has no, um, objection to replacing the, uh, curb that's there now, which is in fairly poor condition. The refuge area along, um, the west-ruce side of the building.
One second.
That is being proposed as an enclosure, trash enclosure. There were, uh, comments, uh, by, uh, by the planner, which I guess I could address right now, is one that should be five feet away from the, uh, property line. Uh, we'll make sure that that would be changed instead of a five-by-ten, we'll make it a, a three-by-ten enclosure and maybe make it a little bit longer, uh, just to make sure the content would never trespass or step the poles and then replace there. So, we'd be able to maintain that five-foot separation between the fencing and the property area. The other comment that was in the planner's report, which I'll address now, is instead of a chain link fence, uh, they want us to have a, uh, a, like a vinyl solid fence. So, that, that would be something that the applicant will be to, will incorporate that.
Can you tell me what the composition is of the enclosure?
Uh, it's a, right now, we have a six-foot-high chain link fence, but it would be a six-foot-high vinyl fence with a concrete slat.
The, uh, setback of five feet, are you going to store anything between the enclosure and the fence?
Are we going to store anything? No.
Okay. So, there'll be no storage behind there?
No storage, no size of the rear, and that's all within the grass area.
Okay.
By the way, we'll stipulate also the private wall.
And the tenant will bring the refuse to the curb?
Correct. Or to?
Or to.
Wherever, yeah.
The signage, uh, that would be something I believe that the architect has and is prepared to discuss. And we will be, uh, as pointed out in the engineers' review letter, most of the planners, uh, the lots twenty-five and twenty-six will be, uh, consolidated along the larger line.
And we'll get the meets and bounds description from Mr. Deck, prepared due to consolidations submitted to council, uh, for history deal in, in your engineers.
Just a little bit of a, a walk through the, like, the, the. We are providing access to that refuge area by a concrete wall that could be also accessed through, if you can see those two hash mark areas on the left and right side of the building.
You have your, your, your light there.
I'm sorry, I didn't, we died. Sorry. Uh, this area here is hash mark, is part of the paint area, but there's no parking in that area. And the tenant would be able to access through the signs, both tenants, to be able to access to that refuge area through that service wall. And again, there is a, uh, landing here and a landing area here. We, uh, moving on to the store order, management section of the report, again, we are proposing to do an underground detention system that, um, would be located in the east-ruce side of the parking lot. We have, uh, a, uh, we can get those in the, the plan, so we have. See here, uh, our detention system, we have an alley structure and a trench drain, uh, that'll collect, go back up, collect all of the runoff from the building and all of the runoff from the parking area. So, there'll be no, uh, runoff, uh, from any, uh, pervious coverage on the proposed site. Everything will be collected and then deposited into the underground detention system that we use.
Mr. Deck, can you, or Mr. Grumal, can you expand the outlet control structure? That has a debris grate on the inside?
I'm sorry?
A debris grate? Is there a debris grate on the inside?
There's a two, like a half-inch or something there. We have no wire mesh right there, but we wouldn't be able to do that. Uh, the utilities, we are showing, if you go back up to.
I'll let you go back up one thing. The operations manual, that will be supplied and that will be, that's got to be recorded, uh, so that the system can, it's no problem. It would have. Sorry.
No, no, that's, I missed that one. I have another print. Uh, the utilities, uh, we are proposing, um, underground utilities for both sides of the building. We can be, uh, servicing both halves, uh, of the tenants' occupied area. Uh, the, uh, landscaping, again, as is shown on exhibit A1, uh, we would use all that area, the chain and green, as in the rear. Um, I'm not sure, we have a discussion we have from the board, but we, uh, are willing to place some sort of arbor ivy type of screen along the fence in the rear. I don't think it's necessary on either side, only because we have two industrial uses, uh, in terms of property. Uh, but the other areas that are left open will be grass areas and the, the street trees will be placed in the right-of-way area between the curb and the, uh, property line.
They can't go on the right-of-way, Mr. Deck.
Okay.
You're only showing landscaping within the right-of-way.
Uh, well, I wanted, yeah, but I wanted to emphasize that that would be a grass area. Something like that, I would imagine.
Yeah, the thought was that right now, it's just gravel and green, that we would clean up that area in the right-of-way and plant grass there.
The, uh, trees, then, uh, I guess we would ask for the board's recommendation on where, since we need three of them, where they might be placed and maybe a arbor ivy might be considered a tree. I'm not sure how the board would respond to that. No.
We'll work with your board professionals, uh, as far as the location of the street trees.
Yeah, certainly, you have some of, of all the sides. We can do that. Lighting, um, we do have, uh, two lighting standards shown, uh, locations on either side of the parking lot. We need the light, uh, light intensity max and the minimums and we are proposing, uh, sheet box type lighting with screens or, or hides any direct light source, uh, from the, uh, fixture. And, uh, other than, I believe the architect would describe the wall mounted lights that he has on the building. But those are, just for the receivers' purposes. And then under the slant section, we will be, uh, moving on to the project. And then under the slant section, we will be moving to the project. Additional to have given on the tonneau lights, I think that's really something, maybe if the board wants to give any kind of recommendation, I'm sure the applicant would agree to, obviously other than that, to, if there's a specific time that they should go off or when the solar is occupied, I'm not sure how that would be, maybe part of the solution, but I'm sure the applicant would agree to that.
Yeah, with the modern lighting, the light, we would have it, it would be security, particularly the front area is through lighting, after hours, low level.
And as far as generators, not proposed unless it's required.
And by way of any other approvals that are required, and certainly make any condition approval this board issue upon any ancillary approvals that can be required to obtain.
Does your applicant have any opposition about installing cameras, security cameras on those light poles?
No, you can't testify, but I take over the question.
Okay.
Before you move on to Mr. O'Brien's report, just a couple questions. Earlier, you said that you'd be replacing the entire fence, not just, not a portion of it, the entire along the, all three sides of the site?
Yes.
Because it said the existing fence on the east side, so it's really good to associate the revised, we revised and showed that fence to be around the perimeter.
Yeah, so the applicant said that the site fences aren't very crocheted in those replacements.
And not just that, I know one particularly on the right-hand side is somewhat almost three feet onto our property, and by moving it to the property line, I think both of you commented with the ability to provide additional landscape for the per base area.
And what you, the tenant's aware that there cannot be any outdoor storage for either of the tenants. Next, when they connect to the existing inlet along their field, the inlet has to be cleaned when they connect. And if you can show the roof drains going into the...
The detention system.
Detention system. And as the chairman also mentioned, like, I think having a catch rack for the outlet control structure should also be added. And when we submit the landscaping species and type, it should be added to the plan.
So you move the...
If it's, if it's going to be new, I don't think so, if they were reusing the existing center, I would say we probably would be, because it's new, they can just probably just connect. Thank you.
Thank you. Going on to the planner's...
Wait, wait, let me just interrupt one time, just a moment. There was a comment in the Harvard, in particular, about providing the landscaping, oh, you did it, warranty for two years, no problem with that.
Oh, one other thing, I did review, I think my comment about the store order manager before, I did review it, and I'm fine with that.
If you could go on to the planner's report, the, I think we've discussed the issue of discrepancies in the signage art, we incorrect, of that, so we try, and we will make that part of the revised plan, part of the resolution, including making sure that it's all been corrected. Again, and I think it's worth mentioning, is that we are not asking for any bulk requirements for the structure, or for pavement, or parking, or footed area, or per base coverage. We're only asking for variances that have to do with the existing non-conformity of the shape of the lot inside. The, I'll go on to sheet two. The hours of operation, I believe that would be something that would be yet to be determined because the... But we would need, whatever, would not exceed, or if they aren't a specific standard, they would certainly have to be met. There's no noise, this is number four of sheet two, no noise associated with the proposed uses. There's no, this is only storage warehouse, there's no... Manufacturing, thank you. In the building itself, it's not allowed, and that's how it would be rented. No manufacturing at all, just storage itself. Sheet five, again, to do with the coverage, I think we just talked about that enough. The space on the parking area now, I tried to define that highlighted area, it's going to be a pervious area, and wherever the trees are, of course, it'd be plantings, and bent material, and where it's not, it would be grass material. The street trees, we agreed to plant them, although we would like to get guidance from the board as to where that should be placed. We are, we don't need any loading space since we do follow the five thousand square foot max requirement. Signage will be addressed by the architect. We run to number ten. Vehicles are not owned by the applicant, they are not rented, they are only there to accommodate some of the local businesses while the site is inactive. Then once the site is built, that will not be any type of storage car or vehicle storage at the site, other than the use of the tenants. Number eleven, we will be asking for that consolidation of the two lots, the concrete area in the above, behind the building for the landings, I believe the architect will go with some further detail as far as the location of the doors, the landings, and the lighting again for both those doors. The twelve or thirteen match can be incorporated in twelve. Fourteen, again, the architect will adjust the location of the HVA C units.
So Mr. Deck, on twelve and thirteen, the landings that are shown in the image in front of us do not correlate to the exits shown in the architectural plan. Is that correct?
I haven't compared the two, but the intent of the landing is to be the doorway on the architectural plan.
Okay, but just to be clear, this does not correlate to the architectural plan, so this is not accurate.
Okay. And then I, the architect in here, will be able to discuss that in further detail. Existing chain link fence, and we will be removing the existing fences and replacing them with six-foot-high vinyl fence. Trash enclosure, again, will reduce the size, make sure we have a five-foot separation from the property line, and it'll be a solid vinyl fence with a gate. Number eighteen, trash area would have a concrete pan, lighting. We meet that requirement, and there are two lights again in the parking lot, and whatever wall mounted lights for number twenty, we'll discuss by the...
For nineteen, Mr. Deck, you're showing a twenty-five-foot can to lap the right-of-way. Is it possible to reduce that? That area is so limited, as we know, there's really no reason to light it up anymore if we don't have to.
Yes, we certainly do that. You can probably just move the pole, we'll defer the way from the street. Okay. Thank you. Number twenty, I think those are the kind of issues the architect is able to address. Then we move on to sheet four, and then we get on to that section, that's called variance relief, and we are, again, I'll six, two quickly, we have eight thousand square foot lot, minimal available in the industrial zone is twenty thousand square feet, it's an existing non-deployed lot with a hundred foot is required, there are both a lot of frontage in with, in this case, they are the same thing, because it's a, they're kind of a lot, there will be a difference, it was on the curb type of frontage. They're both one hundred feet, and we have eighty, and then again, lot coverage, we do have a seventy-four percent lot coverage, and the reciprocal of that would be twenty-six percent of minimal loading space. So F and G are not required as a variance. Let's go, C, D, and E of this section are the requirements that we require for that. So again, those are all existing non-deployed. I think I'll just skip that next section, move on to section six, which talks about the negative criteria, yeah, section B, negative criteria. Not a planner, I am not going to testify as a planner, however, it's obvious that there are no negative impacts in improving this, improving these improvements to the site, certainly making this whole area cleaner and better and more attractive area on the street that's, could do some improvements. And positive, it would be certainly positive to the board, and it doesn't mean we would necessarily require that.
Thank you, Mr. Deck. Chairman, no further questions, Mr. Deck.
Anybody? Yes, Mr. Vantino.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
I waited.
All right, you were good to have.
So, hearing your testimony about you don't know what type of climate you're going to have, but you also mentioned that you're probably not going to have any larger trucks coming in and out of the, you have minimal depth in area, only have eight spots. What's the need for a thirty-two-foot-wide driveway, since you, the normal's twenty-four, and you only have eight spaces?
Right, the normal's twenty-four, but we have the two garage doors in front of the building, and in order to make a good separation between the doors and just make it a little lot better, when you do have some larger, like say, single bottom type trucks entering and leaving the site, that it would just be a better traffic or turning the way.
Okay, that's a good point. The second thing I was looking at, before you came up with the green space, with, Mr. Hall knows that my typical comments for other places would not put curb in the right-of-way, but since you have curb in the right-of-way, and you're proposing grass on the other side of it, which is not really like the same integrity as the rest of peripheral avenue, and I don't think there's any grass in the right-of-way.
Lot paving.
Lot paving, so you're just going to put grass in there, which I don't know how it has to look, I mean, look nicer with this with grass, but you'd only grass, but anyway, is the grass going to be upgraded to the top of curb, in that case, do you need to cap branch, and there's no sidewalk, but the fact that you've got curb going to be interrupting the right-of-way?
Will it be press curb at the entranceway?
Well, no, as a gutter, it's going to be a press curb. But what about the curb going up? Why do you need that curb there?
Building up on either side?
Yeah, perpendicular to the gutter, why do you need a curb there? I mean, otherwise, I mean, do you then have to put the press curbs here? I don't know. Or ADA, I think you should, it's, it's the law, I'm just saying, I don't know whether...
I mean, for future street improvements, if, I guess, maybe it should be the press curb on the other side of the driveway opening?
I'm not saying, I'm not saying the fact that you put, you're putting curb in, unless you're going to say this is the press curb, like transitioning curb between the right-of-way line and the gutter line, the easiest thing might be just to take it out, but, you know, I'll leave that up to Christians to comment on. I'm just saying is that since you're introducing curb there, there's no curb there now.
Right. Well, I would like to still keep the curb with, as you said, that's might be a good idea as far as dimension, height curb from the road to the site, but I'd like to keep the curb, just keep the pavement from being cracked off and, you know, that's a tendency to do if there's nothing like a curb, to keep it from...
Well, if you don't, well, Kevin, have you agreed, is there going to be grass in the right-of-way?
I've seen no proposal.
Well, on there, we've got grass in the right-of-way.
I need to see a landscape.
Right, right, right. So if you don't put grass in the right-of-way, I'm just saying, if you don't put grass in the right-of-way, the whole thing's going to be asphalt, right? And there's not going to be any stuff, there should just be a drive...
A rattle or something.
Yeah.
I don't know, or maybe a boot or something, well, I don't know. Again, it's the right-of-way, we just thought grass would look nicer, have some additional green space on the street, maybe that next project comes along.
I was thinking that, right, or get some of the other property owners to...
Yeah, I'm not saying there's grass, I'm just saying is that if there's, I could be wrong by all, because if there's any other green in the right-of-way of peripheral avenue between Michigan...
So, Mr. Vantino, here's, it's just a bit of a stretch, and I think you and Mr. David touched on it just now. That whole area right now looks very much like a big old parking lot when you go from one end of the block to the other. So introducing some greenery, hoping that the other tenants and the other people would latch on to that, I'm not too far from this area, and it, the problems are starting to build up, and that's why I was happy to hear that the applicant was going to put cameras, he's okay with putting cameras on his light poles, because we have a thing now that we're trying to work closely with the police, all the, not all the applicants, all the people that have businesses there, we're getting together to kind of position our cameras in such a way that when things are going on, we can help the police department as well. But beautifying that area, it lends itself to a nicer community, it doesn't have to have to look so rustic.
I'm not turning that down, I'm just bringing it up as an observation from other experiences on designs that, you know, if you're going to put grass there, okay, I get it, if you're not going to put grass there, then you have curbs sticking out.
Yeah, I think keeping it...
But right-of-way, then, it's not a, there's no, there's no sidewalks there, but I'm sure people walk there, and then walk their street, and walk along, and then one more thing, you trip over your right-of-way.
Could you point with your light to the curb that Mr. Vantino was talking about?
Yeah.
So these two sides, right here, so you're saying that people walking from one side to the other will trip over the curb?
I'm not saying they will, I'm just saying if you give them an opportunity, I'm sure somebody will walk through. If we're taking a claim against a car, but that, maybe, maybe it doesn't have to count for it. I'm just saying.
And all those lawyers.
That's all, that was, you like our words.
I think, you know, having the curb come out, defining there's an apron there, because no other property, none of the properties on that street do that, so you start to define it, this is an example, next property gets developed.
That's the way I feel, yeah.
And if you have to, we're trying to improve impression in for a future sign.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you're going to have that, do you then need ADA because of the curb, that's all.
But we can certainly incorporate that in the design of the curb, have an ADA type of...
Right now...
That's what I'm saying, there's no sidewalk, I need ADA.
On the block, like, the parking goes into the real park in the right-of-way. So, you know, I mean, I do agree with what you're saying, that maybe curb maybe might not be the best thing along there, because right now, you know, no, people are probably walking on pavement, or in the street, and they would probably be more kind of walk on the street, there's grass there.
Yeah, but if you don't start someplace, it's always going to look the same. So if we're looking at, giving our town a bit of a facelift, not bit, a facelift, I mean, it might be the place to start. I understand Mr. Vantino's concern, but I think it does delineate that area and so on and so forth as we go down the block, and it, I think it lends itself to beautifying that area, even though there's trucks and cars and things going in and out, we can start to clean it up. Because what does happen is people then jump that whole side, and you got cars parked where they're not supposed to be parked, they'll know to stay away.
I have just one more comment on that, and I'm not disagreeing with you.
You can disagree with me, because that's how I learn.
I'm just bringing up an observation, okay? Something that you just said, in the future, for future development, this could be the start of it. Well, seeing that it is... Well, seeing that it is an industrial area, seeing that you have no sidewalk on either side of the road, wouldn't you, again, observation, would it be better to have a future door installed sidewalk on one side of the street, but would it be better to have grass in the side of the street? Again, if, again, it's just an observation, you can put the grass in whatever you want to do or you put sidewalk in and put grass on either side of the sidewalk. You got four foot sidewalk, you have curb on either side, front and back. It blends into the asphalt, somebody can walk on it, somebody built it next door, maybe you've got a sidewalk down in Michigan or sidewalk down the market, I don't know. But again, I'm not pushing the impervious, really I'm not. Just bringing up an observation about that curb.
Anybody ever thought on that?
I would say just say being transitioned to the curb being to be flush at the right of way and then just have edge of pavement, put grass on either side or adjacent to the driveway. Cover whole of the parking area. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, your master plan does call for upgrading the appearance of industrial areas.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I'm not steadfast, but I'm really concerned about that. Yes, we can make it flush and yes, we could just continue the way it looks, but if we're starting to upgrade that whole area, maybe it's a good place to start and I'm not opposed even to thinking about a sidewalk on either side and then if that was the case, but I don't, I don't think that, well, I say I'm not opposed, but I am opposed to it because I don't think it works in that environment. But to bring that out, a grassy area, I think it starts to look a little bit more clean up. Maybe that's the word.
And I think on the end, the applicant, having raised curb along the property line and then having a clush curb as it goes out into, in that right of way area, again, defines the driveway, allows the area to have the grass on either side and addresses, Mr. Vantina's concern about anybody tripping on that.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'm good.
Sounds, sounds like a doable thing that way. Good point, Mr. Vantina.
Again.
That's why you're here.
Again, I have no further questions. Mr. Deck, please.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Deck?
One thing, on the architectural plans, they show, I guess, two doors on either side of the lot, east and west have been two on the back. Can, are you going to have slabs for each one of those?
Yeah, I'll let Mr. Vantina address that.
Okay.
Okay. But he can show it on the strongest.
Sure.
Ready for Mr. Vantina?
Yes.
We may, we may need your back, Mr. Deck.
No problem.
He's not leaving. Bob, if you could raise your right hand when you're ready with regard to this matter, do you swear the testimony you're about to give, shall we, the truth?
Yes, I do.
State your name, say your last name, please.
Robert Vantina, G R I M A L D I. All my licenses are still, of course.
You're an architect, licensed architect.
Yes.
It's up to the board, except for Mr. Vantina.
Great. All right. Got it. It's walking out, I'm sorry. So Mr. Vantina, obviously, I mean, assisting Mr. Deck with the computer there. If you could take us through what's proposed by way of the building and address the architectural comments in the review letters from both Barbara and from Shamrock.
The computer decides the plan.
And any, if you refer to the page of the, of your exhibits and if it's something that hasn't been previously submitted, we'll have it marked as clarification.
I have it here and I also have a hard copy. So first, I have the handouts.
Smart, this is eight two. Okay. Steve, eight two. Isn't it nice when applicants bring copies to the board to speak about the plan?
Yes.
Absolutely. That's right. What was that? Did you try to say that Mr. Deck didn't bring that color?
That would be eight three. The.
We have eight two and eight three. The eight two is going to be the colorized frontage and eight three would be the floor plans.
There's no change to the plan whatsoever. There are minor change on the elevation, on the elevation, which, what are we up to, eight three?
Yeah, yes, we, eight three is the floor plans.
Okay, so eight four is the elevation and that's, that's minor change on it. I was able to get an address from the engineer's comments and the main, their main preference was the signage and that's what's changed on the elevation, which is in your handout and it's on board and if you want, switch it to.
Are we going to colorize to the black and white?
Black and white, P and T. Thank you.
The elevation is eight four.
She TV two, right?
TV two.
And behind him is our TV camera.
The color of red ring is, is, is it three?
Eight, two is the handout. Two is the colorized handout of far the building. Eight three is the floor plan. And you had eight four for elevation.
Yeah, yeah. There is no real change on the floor plan, but we can mark it as in the handout. Okay. Okay, so Mr. Deck brought up the fact of the square footage of the footprint of the building, which has not changed the, and we can maybe color the version of that too. The square foot, the footprint is a total of two thousand nine hundred forty-four square feet. Total square footage of, including the second floor of office areas, would be three thousand six hundred sixty-four square feet. Again, this is an empty vacant lot. We're proposing two little rental units. The thirty-two feet is pulled straight into garage doors as far as the driveway width. And the thought is, just like in many of the other businesses down in that area, whether it's another sign guy, another plumber, another, well, maybe another plumber, barely that much more competition. Another electrician, tradesman, whatever it may be. He has area to pull his vehicles into his shop. He has a little office area on the first floor with a restroom, office area on the second floor with a restroom and warehouse space. Obviously, if there's anything else perceived by a rental, they would have to come in front of this board, but again, we're just looking at it as a little warehouse area for local small businesses rather than a vacant lot that, again, right now, the other tenants on the block are using to park their cars or broken cars or whatever else there may be. Again, simple receptionist, private office area, ADA restroom, staircase up to the second floor from the warehouse space. That's as far as the plans go that are in front of you. Elevation between the colored ones that you have in your hands up on the board and the black and white that's in front of you on the projector. Split face block building, two different colors, a darker split face and a lighter split face, black aluminum storefront. We have, referencing the signage, we've made a gesture towards it as far as there was a sign, there was a sign band awning upon the drawing, just what we called out. So there's a square footage called out of the sign band just above the awning. And just in case a tenant may want to put a symbol or something on the awning, I included the square footage of the awning as signage square footage. When Mr. Deck updates his bulk, bulk chart on his drawings, he'll include the allowable signage and we will adjust this according to make sure that we are within the performance of the current site, sign, sorry, current sign ordinances, but they, what we will show will be consistent with what's allowable right now. Again, if a tenant wants to come in and do something else, they can do that as they will later on. Okay. On the plan. We've worked for Ed, Ed will update and coordinate his plans. Again, the concrete hedge is just so you're stepping out from slab of the building to the concrete wall right outside the door, just so that we know it's firm and level and meets the building rather than stepping out of the building onto grass or gravel or whatever else. We're not proposing any other platforms or anything else beyond the building. It is, and the doors are there just to be able to step out, get a breath of fresh air, go eat your lunch in the back, you know, maybe stand in the back and enjoy the, our facilities that we are going to plant in the back of the building. That would be the landings from seven statements. As far as each.
The one on the left, does that interfere with the trash area?
It should not.
I think it's behind it.
Yeah, I think it is behind it. And we'll make sure that Mr. Deck shows on, or the doors on his plan, are super books on his plan for coordination. Going to the HVAC. Right now, these are warehouses. They might end up just being done with a mini split and can never run the roof. We're going to walk through that as we do if this board decides to approve the drawing of the project. Whether we do that or conventional rooftop unit, if it's a rooftop unit, right now, we're calling out as a maximum height of thirty-five feet. We probably have a roof deck of about thirty-two feet, which would give us a three foot parapet around the building. At that height, even if we put standard, let's say, for the size of these buildings, which each use is about fifteen hundred square feet, put a three ton unit at the most, maybe that unit's forty-two inches tall. So yes, true, at a line of sight from somewhere rather far away, you might see the top of the HVAC unit, but reasonably even with the increased elevation of the residences behind us, unless they're peeking out the vents of their attic, they should not really see the rooftop units if we end up going to package units on the roof. Because again, we're going to have a minimum of a three foot parapet on the building.
Did you say a three foot parapet?
Parapet.
Okay.
So from roof depth to the top of the parapet.
Right. So how far above the parapet would a three ton unit typically stick up?
Six maybe, six inches maybe a foot.
Which would only be visible if you're at five o'clock.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And again, basically, there's just a couple of caves behind us, so unless they're cleaning their chimney, they're fine not seeing it. The security lights on the back, you know, whichever the board prefers, our thought is that there's just going to be motion detection so that if, you know, somebody's running around at night and lights will come on and people will be alert. But there is also the thought of, would it be preferential to have a light on consistently? So you can see if anybody's doing anything. Mr. Chairman, going up as a reference of suggestion about incorporating cameras that are being cooperated with the lease, is it a recommendation that we do keep them on all the time?
Look, it's, it's not part of your plan, not, it's not part of your application. It's just something that we're talking about.
And I'd like to help.
You know, the more we could do in that department, as far as I'm concerned, would be the better, you know.
It's your preference. We'll take the guidance. Our thought was that they'd be motioned. If the board would prefer something else that they're on for a set amount of hours or something, the tent will off, the owner will obviously.
So my, my buildings, I have them on twenty-four seven. Correct, so.
And I understand. So my understanding now is that the, there'd be a six foot vinyl fence along the back of this property line against those residences.
Yes.
And the lights openly downward facing.
Yes.
Not a wall pack or something directly downward facing so it doesn't shine out.
They have internal cuts on them.
Okay.
Internal, it's the only thing I should say.
Okay, so that they should not be visited, the light source should not be visible from the residences. So if they're on all the time, there's still going to be a glow there and no one's going to be able to see what's between that fence and the building. So that does nobody any good at all. If they were, if they were motion detected, no one's going to be able to see back there unless you've got some kind of camera back there. So I would suggest to the board that the air on the resident's side, and the less light, less light back there, the better. So we're not.
Keep fruition.
New light where there's no light for anything. Keep it motion. I don't, I don't like motion because no one's there reporting.
You want them shut off that X amount, X time?
There's also, I'm not sure if the landscaping's on their side of the property or on the neighbor's part. There's those trees on the other side as well.
Yeah, there's lots.
You're actually probably getting more light right now in the back of these backyards because there's no building in there right now. Once you put the building, you're going to block all the street light, as Chairman said, that this area is well lit at the beginning, so we're going to put a building to block the current light pollution from the streets into these neighbors' backyards.
But on the other hand, by putting a light over those back doors, if one had a motion detector, every time there's a strong wind, that light's going on in some way in that second floor, even the first floor, depending on what light, could be looking at that light going on and on and on. And to what purpose? Time or emotion, whichever load of, we'll follow the recommendation. But we knew the hours of operation, we'd be able to say shut them off like an hour after the closing.
I come from the other school. I happen to light the light, you know, especially when you're operating business, you want that light on as long as it doesn't impact the neighbors. If we can figure a way to do that because you want to see and it also helps the cameras.
But you don't have residential there.
Um, no, just the my stick.
Also, the technology of like Ring cameras, I mean, they're so small and they can, they don't light up, you know, they don't need light.
They don't need it, but it helps.
It helps.
So to board, any question to the board? If I may, you're, you're asking for cameras. Would you like the cameras that are motion centered with the lights? Because like the Ring, the Ring spotlight, not, not that it has to be that brand, we're not, none of us have Rings stock here.
You know, Mr. Vantina, I don't want to spend too much time on these cameras, but my recommendation would be is if we could propose some type of camera to help us out in the neighborhood, also help the police department facing, yeah, the street. Right, so that would help us out a great deal. It's not part of what you must do, it's not in your application.
I just, again, I don't want to stress the, we'll be open to it. I believe he has cameras on his current facility on South Michigan, so it's not a foreign thing. But just as far as the writing down, what I need you to do, motion or timing? We'll say not at clock and or an hour after closing?
I can't comment on that because I'm going to be one sided with that. I think, you know.
We'll, we'll talk about.
We'll, we'll talk about that, you know, let, let, the board has got...
Yeah.
The board has got some help here.
In, in reference to 21, um, I, I think between the memory that I provided, um, and the fallout again, um, the three courses of a darker split face block and then the remainder of the split base up to the top of the garage doors and then transitioning to ethos from there above, um, with the coloration that we have on the building right now. Uh, we did wanna go with a darker base right now. Yes, we're trying to beautify the street, but we know this street has a lot of dirt and gravel and dust and if we put a very light colored building here, we're gonna make a power washer, it's gonna be rich. And again, uh, the awnings, as far as color and graphics, if he gets a tenant and that may wanna change the graphic to be a branded, uh, awning, um, we'd like that, it's the board's liking, um, but the building as shown in the red room, I think, uh, meets the commercial building design standards, um, if you'd like to discuss it further down here.
Would the awnings remain consistent from a coloration perspective? Like if a tenant comes in and says, oh, I don't really like, you're showing red, this one says, I like the red, but the other one says, I like green, you know, I mean, they got Christmas, you know? So I mean, will, is the intent to keep those consistent to maintain?
We would prefer if they get branded, but if you want...
No, I'm not talking about brand, well, branding is, would change the color, I get that.
You know, your, your Best Buy, you want blue, your McDonald's, you want red and yellow, but, um, if, if it's the board liking that it be consistent, so shall it be.
So to that point, the face of that building above the windows, you've got a total height of 35 feet, but up to just maybe a little bit further than above the windows, you have 21 feet.
Correct.
Like from ground level to just above the window where you have your cross hatch line and it says here, you got 10 here and 11, let's call that 21 feet. So it looks like to the top of a window, to the roof line, to the, to the top of the parapet, you're gonna have somewhat of 14 to 15 feet up there. That's that big white area that you see up there, Mr. Romaldi?
Yeah.
Am I correct?
I'm not sure.
Are you on the one?
Uh, no.
So you see the top of the window?
Yes.
To the top of the parapet, you would have approximately 15 feet.
Your 21 feet is not to the window.
No, it's above the window.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, I'm just showing it's 21. So if you were at the top of the window, you would have more than 15 feet.
Yes.
Right? So let's say you have 18 feet, I'm just throwing out a number. The one thing that I'm looking at that if you have two tenant spaces, you don't want that to start to look like one side is yellow, one side is blue, to his point, especially up there.
Again, the, the building would remain one uniform color. Uh, I, the only thing I was referencing as far as branding colors was one specifically, and that's on the revised elevation bubble, but if that's not, if that's concerned, consistent.
Well, it's concerned that we don't start looking at different colors for each tenant above the window line saying, this is my space.
No, no.
You know what I'm saying?
I, I agree with you and, um, we could absolutely make that condition that the, the coordination of the build, of the local building stays, stays uniform.
And no signage up there at all of any kind?
No. If they wanna, if they wanna come back, that, that's, they're gonna come back and get something.
If it doesn't comply, signage doesn't comply with the ordinance.
Okay.
So yeah, just for me, the coloration actually for me makes it more attractive. And so then if you have two different colors, I think it starts to take away from the attractiveness of, of it.
Yes, exactly.
So that's why I'm, that's why I was asking, is the intent to keep that consistent? I mean, I, I don't, I actually like the red, but if it was two blues, two greens, whatever, there's, yeah, there's consistency. So that's all my recommendation would be is that they remain consistent, but I do like the red.
Okay.
By the way, I spoke to Mr. Brandon, uh, he says that he likes the...
Yeah, it looks nice.
So the board would be approving that consideration?
Yes, agreed.
Yes.
What are the, the dimensions on the garage doors? Can you just clarify?
Do I have the height of the garage door? No, I apologize, you do not have the height of the garage door called out, but I would assume that's a 14 foot or anything.
Okay, and width is 10?
10.
Okay.
What else you have, Mr. Romaldi? Um, you wrote the 21 there, weren't you?
Yeah, I think.
That's it? I have a quick question for you, and maybe it's an applicant question, but I'm not sure. So right now you have two tenants, tenant one on the left, tenant two on the right, and they occupy both the first and second floor.
Yeah.
Okay, the, the first floor, it appears that you have your bathroom there and you have an office space to the rear and you have a warehouse to the right, right, more or less, and then you have another warehouse to the left of tenant two. At no time would the second floor, the sub left to tenant three and four.
That is not the intent.
Not the intent, but not the intent. Not, because that could happen like if you had a beautician who wanted to go in there and she's a one man shop, you know?
I guess you could, but then, you know, from the standpoint of building code entering through another space to get into your space, to get into a second floor, so I think Anthony would have, look at trouble with that.
Okay.
As long as we have two tenants, yeah, the way it's drawn, I don't think we'd meet muster with, uh, you feel, the apartment.
It wouldn't potentially need more parking, too.
I was saying, pardon, pardon.
You could make that a condition.
I think it should.
Maxentin.
Yeah, and the intent also is that if it's possible that, um, some single occupant comes and says, I'm gonna take the whole thing, down to one.
Right, would have a problem.
Yeah.
Maximum two.
Possibly could be, you had one tenant, all the things.
Yeah, so it's either one tenant for the entire building or two tenants split down the middle.
Right.
But we don't wanna see three or four with somebody supplementing something upstairs and say, ah, it's okay, you know, I know the guy.
Not legally.
Is it possible to have, not to complicate, overcomplicate, like a tenant on the first floor, say the left side, and then the right side tenant goes up and takes the entire second floor? Still two tenants?
Again, the, the second floor for the most part is open to the first floor, it's just...
Oh, just open?
It's, yes, just open.
Other than that office space?
Other than that office space.
Oh, okay, that wasn't clear to me either.
This is...
I read it wrong.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, yeah, no.
This is opening area.
Cause I thought they were gonna have additional storage just...
That's just all open to below, warehouse wrapping, how come we have 14 foot, how come we have a 14 foot garage door? Otherwise, we'd have way too much square footage, we'd need skinny parking spots and...
Yeah, it's clear.
It's literally the office, the kitchenette, yeah, that's it.
It's clear now.
Yeah. And hence that's why that to the right hand side has the place, so, and I'm, I'm sorry, I was just moved in too much.
Okay, we got it.
Little, yeah? That's all I have.
I just have one more question, and that is the, um, the materials of the, that will extend around the, the entire...
Yeah, all four sides, I just rendered the front rather than...
Yeah, that's fine.
It was only Monday that we got this stuff. I'm on grid, so...
Okay, are we done looking at this pretty picture? Can I go back and...
Okay.
All right, we, we heard that testimony and, uh, maybe we would like to hear from more professionals at this point? Any comments, Mr. Deck?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Um, there's been a lot of discussion tonight about things we haven't seen, so I would suggest that should the board decide to act favorably on this, that revised site plans, including landscaping, lighting, coordination between the architectural and the engineering plans be submitted. I don't know if the board wishes to see them or not, because we have not seen what has been described, but if we do, that could certainly, certainly have the right to do that, or if you want to be of your staff to do that, that would be...
Okay, well, we'll talk about that further. Do you have anything else?
No, Mr. Chairman, unless there's any questions on my report.
Okay, were you satisfied with the questions that were answered and things like that?
Questions are answered, Mr. Chairman. It's up to you whether, whether or not they're satisfactory.
Chris, as Kevin stated, revised site plan, um, fence, um, no outdoor storage, clean unique inlet if they're connected to, roof drains, trash rack, and a revised landscaping plan species, uh, plus and along with, uh, with our reports.
Um, anybody have any questions from the board to the, our planners or the applicant or anything like that? Okay, before we start discussing what we would like to do, I think we need to open this to the public?
We do. I make a motion that we open this hearing to the public.
Okay, made by Mr. David, second by Mr. Mazur, in favor.
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak? How about this case? Seeing none?
I make a motion that we close the hearing to the public.
Closed by Mr. David, second again by Mr. Mazur, all in favor.
All right. Do you still want this picture up or...
Does it look good in the background? This blue light, you know? I feel like I'm... No, if you can't, we, we've done it, I think we've done it. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just briefly, so I get, we appreciate the board's time and consideration and board professionals and board staff. I think it's great to see a business owner who's longstanding in, in the borough, investing further and, uh, sitting here patiently and listening to this evening, but I know, I know, truly appreciates, uh, the feedback that we've gotten this evening. I think that professionals fit together a great plan. I think that the building looks fantastic and, and the, and the applicants...
Top right corner.
Sorry, Mr. Hall, there's a lot going on behind me.
I'm used to seeing that.
Do you feel like assessing?
But we, we appreciate it and I think that the willingness of the applicant to respond to all of the, the concerns that were raised by the board professionals and the board shows a commitment to a great improvement to this property and we look forward to the board granting this approval. We have no problem making the approval conditioned upon the supplemental submission, so, again, thank you all again.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Um, board members, any, any comments to anything that you'd like to add or say? Does anybody wanna throw a rock at the blue light? Just, so I, I see no, I'm just...
I just, I just, what, just limiting the, um, height of the air conditioning units on top, I mean, we're gonna limit it to a certain amount, so that it be, they said maybe like six inches over now, um, I mean, pick, just wanna make sure we'll put something, you know, two feet over. Do you know what I mean, if we can do that or if that's...
Well, um, I think the applicant works closely with, uh, an air conditioner because he's also a part of it, you know, looking at his business card and what have you. Um, I think they'll take that, I would hope they take that into consideration, um, to get what we would call a more squatty...
If I may, your line of sight, I, I think the, the engineer's comment was in reference to a line of sight.
Right.
For a line of sight to be able to see that, you have to be about a mile away.
No, I, I don't care what you guys are saying, I think that's fine, I just don't want it to be 10 feet, you know, a big joint, you know what I mean?
That has to be special one.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, I just wanna make sure, that's all.
So, so the minimum that they were talking about would be approximately six inches. But there are, there are different, uh, units that are squattier that you can see.
Even foot higher is okay, I just don't want it to be...
No, I, I don't...
60.
You know what I always, I am on the side of, of somebody coming before us and they're going to put a ton of money into a building and they're all, they also, that's a reflection of who, what they're doing and who they are. And I, and I think, I maybe, I think that they're putting this best foot forward, especially when they introduce some grass going out there.
I agree 100% with you, Chairman, I'm fine.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just make a statement, I think this is a part of town where beautification would be more, and I think the proposal's that we're bringing to the table is my early to make the call.
Very good, Mr....
My problem and the professional support on that.
I, I couldn't agree more. I, I know that Mr. David and I are always fighting hard to get somebody to at least do something that makes sense and it's not just a big box that we all have to look at and it's jammed down our throat. We have color, we have taste, we have ethos that's going on there, we have grass and we have all the implements. So, um, the, the, the last couple of things that I just wanna say is that I, I know that in the beginning it was a little hairy because we didn't have the proper plan in front of us, but the, the attorney made it clear that he spoke with the planner and the engineer that we could move forward because it really didn't impact the design. And that's also gonna be given to us later on and we are not, if we approve, we're not approving the plan, that plan, we are approving the one that they stated in the, in the letter that Mr. Hall told us about, right?
That will inform to your resolution.
That will perform to the resolution.
How about lighting along the rear? Was that, you know, I'll pull on the...
Yeah, we didn't really resolve it.
Yeah, so, uh, lighting along the rear. How do you wanna resolve that? What do we wanna do? What do we wanna say? Do we have suggestion from you?
The less light the better there because of the residents.
That's the way I feel, too.
Okay, so Mr. Deck said that he could reduce the amount of light by setting the lights back, is that correct?
No, this is in front.
That's in front, so what can we do in the rear? No lights at all?
Well, you have to light the doors.
Okay, so what do we do?
You gotta have a switchable amount of light.
Let's, let's, let's make a decision on what we wanna see, guys.
Is there a door?
Yeah, there's two, there's a door, three space.
Doorlight, doorlights?
So we're concerned about the, the, the residents, right? Is that what you're concerned about?
That's my move.
What's the purpose of concern?
You, you open the door, you wanna have a light there, you're working there, so you put a switch on it and it's done, you turn it off when you come in.
So are you saying put a switch on the wall or when you open the door, it's switched by the door opening, right? By a pin?
Something else to go around.
See, I think you should just get a tiny...
Switch, switch.
Can we get a tiny light?
Switch on the wall.
Switch on the wall. Simple.
Simple.
Right? Simple. Okay, we also, yes, sir.
Just realize, as part of building code, if you're gonna have an exterior exit door with an exit sign on it, building code will require, can require an egress aid.
So that's, that's true, and that's where we get into it because...
But that's, that's building code, we can't go against building code.
So define that, if you please. What is it that...
What is it required? If it's a signed exit door, where you have an exit sign on it, so power goes out, exit lights come on, emergency lights go on with the exit sign, if it's an exit door, you're required to have an exit egress light on the outside of that door.
Okay, just, just like what we have right here.
Well, that's interior, but you need one outside.
On the outside.
And you have one outside also.
Exit, egress light?
Exit, egress, yeah.
Officially, you have to have two, just in case the whole does involve, you have to have a...
But that will only kick on in time of emergency.
Yes, correct.
So again, that's a, that's a new point, that's gonna be part of what you have to do as far as the building permit is concerned, right? But we're gonna go with a switch light. And the applicant also agreed to helping out the town with some, some cameras that are facing the streets that could work together with our police department, right? Um, yes.
We, what was the final outcome? I think I heard the trees are right, but like...
And the landscape, like, was proposed and cameras and all of them. But they will put the tree, you can get them to fit somewhere? Not three. Not three. Maybe we can do some low level stuff.
Okay, so we also talked about a two year warranty that they agreed to and they also talked about that you did, did not wanna see our remedy, right?
No, just that I'm not gonna front it. Take the place of a street, yeah.
Okay, and we're going to have the, um, the trash rack in the control structure, in the, okay.
How about the depressor?
The depressor will be at the right away. You getting all this one?
I have a bunch of them, yeah.
All right, so with that being said, to put it professionally, we'd like someone to make a motion with a bunch of them and, um, we, we said a lot of stuff, we, we gotta have a little help here.
Yeah, if someone makes a motion, I will, I'll go for what I have. Yes, if someone makes a motion, I'll, I'll go for what I have. I'm sure, maybe if Kevin has a list, Chris has a list, and they can get it to us before. What do you guys think, draft a motion?
I make a motion to approve the application with the conditions set forth by our professional staff, provided that we get resolution compliance plans and meet.
So I didn't hear the last part of what you said.
I make a motion to approve the application with the conditions set forth by our professional staff, provided that we get resolution compliance plans that satisfy all the requirements.
And that the board does not have to see them, the, uh, the new plans, the professionals will vet them, and we would take their.
That's up to you. But I would, I would agree that if, if we're gonna have to review the landscape plans as they come back, it's kind of difficult to approve the application.
Right.
But if you're gonna set that as a condition of approval, then.
No, I would, I would rely on our professionals to make the final decision. They know what we want, we discussed it, we exhausted it, and I think that we should go that route. Are we good with that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Pantina to approve, seconded by Mr. Mazzio. Roll call, please.
Mr. Reserna?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Pantina?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.
Mr. Ledadi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurlario?
Yes.
Okay. Congratulations, great job again, Mr. Hale. Very good.
What is the condition?
What is the conditions? Mr. Hale? Wait, wait, wait. Have a seat, Mr. Hale.
This is, this is what I have. The revised plans, which, which Nick framed in his motion, landscaping, lighting, et cetera, to be submitted to the board, lot consolidation, two lots to be consolidated, we would review, Christian and I would review the deed when it came in. All the reports that our professionals put together, the conditions, except where we, where we differ. Three trees required to be reviewed as part of our landscaping plan by planner and engineer. Trash enclosure, which we talked about, six-foot-high vinyl fence with concrete slab for refuse, private waller. Operations manual will be supplied, I think that was in Kevin, Chris's, Chris's, Christian's report, operations manual to be supplied. Security cameras on the light holes, we're also gonna work with the borough in terms of camera, we saw on the front of the street. Fencing on all three sides, show roof drains.
Roof fence will be.
Okay. Roof drains going into the detention system, and we need to show those on the plans, landscaping warranty for two years. I think this is what I have for the front, the curving will be flush in the right-of-way, but it'd be a normal curb along the front of the property. Is that what we're talking?
Deep rest curb.
All signage will conform with ordinances. The vinyl fence along the rear of the property will, the lighting along the rear of the property will be a switch light, but whatever the code requires in terms of exit lighting has to be done. Oarnings will be the same color. A2, which is this, that's what we expect to be built?
That's not just gonna say, well, this is what we expect in, in total, right?
Yes.
Including coloring and everything.
Yeah. That, that's what's gonna be built. Maximum of two tenants, although one tenant would be, would be acceptable. I'm assuming there'd be an interior connection, if there's one tenant.
You can take out the interior, center interior wall.
Okay, all right. That's what I have. If Kevin has more, Christian has more, please forward them to me, and I'll load it up into the resolution.
Private waller?
I have.
I have submitted to that. Wired grave over the inlet?
Pardon?
Wired grave over the inlet?
Oh, ten, yeah.
Yeah, trash.
And clean inlet at Fairfield Avenue.
Wired grave. Trash compactor. Trash rack. Trash.
We're gonna crush that stuff before we send it to the.
Okay, got it. That's what I have, in terms of conditions.
So we got all of that, and we already voted, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. That's it. Mr. Hale, you can get up now, and congratulations. Thank you very much, and thanks for preparing an excellent, um, application and testimony. Okay, um, we're gonna just keep moving, okay? Comments for the board? Seeing none, but I do have something I do want to discuss, and I don't know if I should stick it in here, but that is what we discussed earlier. I did have a conversation with our bylaws, say that we can remove someone from our board if they do not attend, and so on and so forth. So I'd like to see if we could have a motion to remove Darren McMahon from our board, as he's been absent more than three consecutive times, and we would like, uh, I guess we need a motion to do that.
Correct.
I guess.
Someone want to make that motion?
In the vacancy.
Isn't he married?
Yes, he is.
I think the vacancy law, I didn't know this was coming up, it's part and parcel of the MLU. I think it's, if there are, I think it's three consecutive.
Right.
Un.
Unexcused.
Unexcused, um.
We're bordering five.
Over, I think the position opens up automatically, and, and then we would send, although a vote doesn't hurt. And then we would send a letter to the governing body saying, this is what happened. And three unexcused.
What were we gonna do if, if the board, right now, our bylaws say, if you miss, I believe it is three, consecutive, uh, unexcused meetings.
Right. Seat can be declared.
We need to, we need to fill that void, and which, things are not getting done.
And I'm just assuming, just because it's a marital term, I'm just assuming it's just assets and not a member, whereas it all, and sub in if they're not.
So once we make this action, then we'll contact the mayor and let her know what is going on, and then if she chooses, she can.
Do you mean it'd be her appointee? I don't think we can, we can switch another member into the class one.
No, I get, I get it, right, but, but like, getting rid of that member, I don't think he's, I think you need to, to elect or appoint another member in that.
The mayor?
I, you know, I get it, but I'm saying, what my original vote was, well, you can just single open it. And.
No, that's a specific class.
Right.
That's a specific class.
Right, that's class.
You don't have to appoint anyone.
No, I get it, I'm just saying.
It would have to be the mayor's call, or either her, or someone.
Body.
And if it's open, if it stays open, it's open, but, uh.
So, do we need a vote, or no?
It would hurt, I mean, if we.
You definitely need a vote.
In conformance with the bylaws, we.
So we gotta follow what I see.
Redeeming the seat vacant, which we probably.
And she'll get, uh, an email from me tomorrow.
But we're not doing it, the mayor.
The ma.
With the.
We're just like, box in the back.
No, no, it's automatic.
So automatic, we're doing it.
And we don't put the mayor's on?
The mayor just appoints a new person.
Yeah. So, so when the mayor appoints someone to this board, that member also has to abide by the board's bylaws. That person is not doing that, the board has the right in order to remove that person, no matter who. And then the mayor has the right to appoint someone.
Are we certain he hasn't been ill, or anything like that?
Certain.
Okay.
It's been five meetings, you said?
I, I know, I know a four right off the top of my head, but I think it's been more.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes.
Is the mayor aware of this?
Yes.
So it hasn't?
Yes. Yes, Bill.
Do we consecutively apply this rule?
I'm sorry.
Do we consecutively apply this rule to all situations?
Yes. Absolutely, yes. Um, and again, you could be absent three times, but a phone call, listen, I'm ill, COVID, I'm traveling, and then the board could make a decision, but we would not frown upon that, especially if you're always in attendance, you know, things happen to people. But not a call, not a, not a thing, Bill, so.
Yeah, that's.
It's, it's time, it's time to move on.
I haven't seen him this year at all.
I haven't seen him this year at all.
And the end of last year.
So we're in what, Jersey?
She could reappoint him. Yeah.
Listen, I'd like to take care of board business and let the mayor deal with this the way she wants, okay? So what I'm asking for is a, if someone can make a motion to have Darren, I think I'm pronouncing the name, McMahon?
McMahon.
No, it's McMahon.
Class one seat is open, is now determined to be vacant, pursuant to our bylaws and the laws of state.
Can you send me the language, and I'll forget.
We'll talk.
Okay.
Let her, let her know ahead, you know, that, that's coming.
Need a motion?
Can I make the motion?
I'd like to make a.
Better from member.
So I, I don't know if the chair can make a motion. Can the chair make a motion?
I've seen it. If there's any, if there's someone out there that, that wants to throw or tap the ring now?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Clemente? I'll second that motion.
There you go.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Ledadi, would you?
I'll second.
You'll second? All in favor?
All right.
Aye.[1607.62]